We'll call door to the regular meeting of Solvang City Council for April the 11th, 2016. I have a note here in the agenda, it says that I will introduce and relinquish the meeting to Alice Ola, who was to be mayor for a day. She was unable to participate today, she will be in a future meeting, so I'll be chairing the meeting all the way through tonight. So we'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deuce?
Here.
Jamison?
Here.
Skid?
Here.
Zimmerman?
President.
Mayor Richardson?
Here. Stand for the pledge, please.
End over your heart, repeat after me. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City managers, report.
Two items I'd like to report on. One, as of this morning, we now have a fourth firefighter who's a paramedic on duty at Station 30, 24 hours, 7 days a week. So the Chumash Tribe, if you recall, was funding that through the Santa Barbara County Fire District, so you're more protected now in Solvang.
That's good news, really is.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
When there is a call, does the fire engine always roll with the paramedic also? I mean with the ambulance?
Well, they're dispatched simultaneous.
So they all go?
Same time. Yeah, I would assume from a dispatcher standpoint, it depends on the type of call.
They're usually slight delays.
Yeah.
Okay, but they all go?
Yes.
Okay.
And then second, just some very good news, Kevin Harmer, our water supervisor, will be going home this week, later this week, from rehab. So he's still got a long ways to go, but he's definitely moved far enough to get out of the rehab facility and go back to his house, so.
That's great to hear.
That's great news. That's my report.
Public communications, written or verbal? At this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers limited to five minutes. I have one speaker slip, Fred Koval.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Fred Koval, Solvang. Got a couple of very quick items, about four. The first is, since the last time I reported, the rainfall, been about a month, two weeks at least, we, on the hill, .58 inches. So I'm giving Brad a sheet here that shows the latest total. Of course, we've known it's been in drips and drabs. If you take a look at the four prognosticators for weather for the next month or so, there's some rain supposedly on the 21st of April and maybe on the 25th, and there might be a surprise or two in May, but minuscule. Next item is, I was very happy to read a very long history of the missions in California, and specific to the mission here. And where it came from is, it's on the King Frederick Inn website. And it is really prolific, about five pages worth, and it's just got to be the best primer I've ever read about the history of the missions, for you. Next item. You know, it was wonderful to watch you guys and the audience, a couple of weeks ago, talk about the library and how important it is to maintain it and what have you. And there was a page, subject Library Funding, page three or four, that was in your packets. And it had all of the various statistics, various operations at both places, Solvang and Buellton. So just for the heck of it, I added up the numbers in the table and did the usual math. And it turned out that 54% of the activity is in Solvang and 46% is in Buellton. Only four more percent activity in Solvang. So probably, so probably, maybe the county just said, heck, it's close enough, we'll just do it 50/50. Is this Brad? No, 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 it's right there. No, excuse me, 54 and 46. Isn't that what I said, 54 and 46? Well, it's an 8% difference, but from the average they picked, it's only 4% more. I'm glad somebody's.
Fred, we'll round your water bill off that way too, okay?
Yeah, we'll round it down. I demand a reset of the timer. My, another little thing on the consent calendar, the warrants. I look at a, there's a number there of about $4,600 for skate park concrete maintenance, okay? And in that, I think I must have gave you an extra sheet there somewhere. Did I give you an extra sheet there? So I always thought that, as I remembered, that all of the division for the skate park was that Holly Delaney and her group supplied all of the construction costs. And I thought it also meant the maintenance costs, and the city provided the grounds. So I'm worried here that somebody didn't do their research and that maybe Holly Delaney and her group should be contacted in that regard.
We took over complete control of the skate park many years ago.
Well, I understand that, but did that include the maintenance?
Everything.
Interesting. Okay. My final thing has to do with estrogensics. Estrogen, a hormone, female hormone, and what it's used for, we pretty much know. So there's an old, there's an old set of estrogenic exposures that is pretty well in depth. But the biggest thing is, besides all kinds of plastics that are leached, including water bottles, and I'm finished buying water, I'm going to have a point-of-use RO system replaced under my sink. But PVC piping is one of the biggest items that creates chemical estrogen. And it's been around for a long time, and it surfaces every now and then. But the use of PVC plumbing anywhere is a real detriment to, especially the male human being. And so I'm giving Brad something associated with that. Okay, guys?
Thank you, Fred. I have no other speakership. Does anyone else wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for council comments and requests. Would you like to start, Mr. Zimmerman?
Last week, went to the Planning Commission meeting, and the Valley Plaza plans look excellent. It looks like it's going to be a great project, user-friendly, and a really kind of cool design. And I've noticed around town, Copenhagen mainly, some of the painting and keeping up with the building and the awnings that are new, the fudge kitchen, it all looks great. I just want to acknowledge the fact that it helps the tourism, it helps our city look good, it shows pride in our city, and really appreciate that. And yeah, all right, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skid?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Deuce?
Tonight, I want to express my condolences to the Wilks family. Betty Wilks, Les' wife, passed away. We go Sunday. For the few of you remember Les, he sat up here as a SMID board member for quite a few years. Had Park Drive-In, building's still there, it's the bar of the touch now. Betty was responsible for me getting lunch for many, many years. I'd call up there about a quarter to, quarter to 12, you know, just order the usual, and sure enough, it'd show up. When I showed up, it was there ready for me. One time, however, she wasn't there. I called up, asked for the usual, the gal had no idea what it was. And this was, you know, I'd been ordering this for three or four years, I had no idea what it was. Now, I would have known if I'd gotten the wrong thing, but I didn't know if it was a double cheeseburger or what it was, what size fry. Luckily, she asked, the girl asked Les, and he knew, so. Anyway, you know, sorry to see her, sorry to see Betty go. She was a regular Danish days, even though she was 93, she was always down for the parade and festivities in her light blue Danish costume. She'll be missed.
I just have a couple of things. One is that I will be attending, I guess by myself because Eddie's going to be in Tahoe, the Buellton City Council meeting, where there's an item on the agenda regarding the Ad hoc Library Committee. So we're hopeful that they will also see their way clear to create a committee so that we can have some good discussions. And then, last Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors approved Goleida's request to have an item placed on the ballot in November for their library, a new bond. And thank goodness they did not include us, they just included what they call their GSA, which is something that was formed when they did Measure L a number of years ago for their library. But another item that they approved, they are making the recommendation that all the libraries within the specific zones get together and discuss a possible ballot measure in 2018, and 2017 would be the time that they would form the various districts, the library districts. So we'll see what happens, if there's any interest. There's not enough interest, then we can't do it by ourselves. So hopefully Buellton will see clear to discuss that item also. That's all.
Thank you. The only comment I have is, I attended the Planning Commission meeting regarding the plaza destruction and rebuild. And in talking with the commissioners after, they were amazed at the quality of the presentation, and so much that it went rather rapidly, the meeting. They expected the meeting to last a lot longer, but the presentation was well done and very informative, and they were very willing to do whatever it takes to make the Planning Commission and the city happy, so we're looking forward to the outcome of that.
May I ask a question about the access? Did they ever hear from Caltrans?
They had two plans, a plan with the 246 access and one without, and they're waiting for the result from Caltrans to see whether or not they'll be able to use the access.
Yeah, actually, we met with the applicant, and they're having their consultant design and option that we will be working with Caltrans on. Caltrans would prefer to work with the city on the application.
So it's going to be, the city would be in favor of an access off of 246?
Yes, we're in favor of that and working with the applicant to get something that Caltrans may approve.
And then does that mean that Building A will be, also be demolished, the old?
If, yeah. With the driveway access, that building gets reconstructed, demoed and reconstruction. Without the access, it stays and gets remodeled.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. That's the end of my comments. Is there any changes to the agenda? How about the council meeting minutes of March 28th? Any additions, corrections, deletions, can have a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
To accept. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, pass 5-0. Onto the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull any consent items?
I guess we don't have anybody from Animal Control here.
Yes, we do. I see Jan Glick back there.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to pull D, just to be able to question, ask some questions about Animal Control.
All right, would you read item 5D, please?
Approve Amendment Number 5 to Agreement for Animal Control Services between the City of Solvang and County of Santa Barbara for $40,783 in fiscal year 2016-17 and $43,802 for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Can we have a staff report, please?
This would add two years to the current contract that you have with the county for Animal Control with a 3.6% increase in each year. And it's based on our population, so I don't, the services would change, would not change, be as provided currently. And Jan is available for questions, she'd probably be a better person to answer any direct questions.
Is there any questions of the staff? Jan, would you like to come forward, please? Do you have questions for her? Would you like to make a present?
Yeah, yeah, I would. Could you just give us a brief rundown of all what Animal Control does for the City of Solvang?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. So your contract with County Animal Services, which has been kind of a longstanding agreement, I believe it's been in place since before I started, and I've been here for 17 years, is for full services, which includes field operations, so animal control officers patrolling the city, responding to requests from citizens, responding to dog bite cases or aggressive animals or injured animals within the city, wildlife questions and resolution of urban wildlife issues, and also 24, seven, seven days a week, 24 hours, that the officers are on call for urgent items. So weekday, well, seven days a week, and officers on duty from 8 until 5. But 365 days a year, they're on duty for after-hours calls, which would be injured animals or aggressive animals or livestock in the roadway, anything that might be posing a hazard to people or animals. We also operate the animal shelter there in Lompoc, and we have a vibrant volunteer program there. The stray animals go there, we have a lost and found program there, an adoption program. And you might remember about two and a half years ago, we renovated that shelter. And so it's really a very nice welcoming environment there now. We really upgraded the cat area and the medical treatment areas and the lobby area for the people, and also have good ADA access to the facility now, which we didn't have in the past, and we didn't even have a public restroom before we renovated. So it's a lot nicer facility, and we are open six days a week there. Animal licenses can be obtained there or online through our web access, even over the phone, they can process an animal license for someone. So that's kind of an overview. We also have our outreach program, which is called Project Pet Safe. And at least once a year, we generally will come to the city, we'll be doing some canvassing of the neighborhood to make sure that the pet owners know their dogs are required to be licensed and working with them on maybe getting their pets spayed and neutered if they might need some assistance with that. And then we will hold a vaccine clinic for vaccinations, microchipping and licensing within the city. We have plans to have an outreach clinic in May of this year. The date has not been confirmed, we're still trying to figure out which of our veterinarians will be attending the clinic, but it's generally on a Saturday. I think it's planned for about mid-May, and we'll get that information to you once we've confirmed the date.
In particular, in regards to wild animals, so you take care of all wild animals within city limits, basically?
We do.
Dead or alive?
We do.
Okay. Do you have a subcontract? Or do you take care of it all yourself? Do you have other agencies that you will call in?
We work with other agencies. Clearly, California Fish and Wildlife, if it's a, if it's a wild animal that's out of our area of expertise, for example, if we had a mountain lion in the city limits, or even a large injured deer, for example, we may have to get another agency to assist us. We also work with wildlife rehabilitators for the small mammals and some of the other animals that can be taken, the birds, birds of prey. I can remember a few years ago, we had some barn owls in your theater fest that we had to, yes. Right? So we do work with others, depending on what the issue is, but we're often the first responders. Our officers don't carry firearms. We are able to do field euthanasia if we have an injured animal that's so badly injured, it can't be saved and it needs to be euthanized. But sometimes we do need the assistance of law enforcement or Fish and Wildlife for some of those actions.
These other agencies that you call in, are they, you mentioned the state. Do you use others, nonprofits?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah. There is a local wildlife rehabilitator here that's, I'm not sure if she's in the city limits of Solvang or not, but she's very close by, that takes some of the small mammals. And then we also work with the Wildlife Care Network, which is in Goleida, and they do a lot of species rehabilitation of small wild mammals and birds.
Okay, thank you.
About how many calls, actually, within the city limits, do you answer every year? Just a, just approximate?
It's going to be, I apologize, but I did not bring that figure with me, and I kind of hate to shoot from the hip on that.
I receive that report periodically, and it's in the neighborhood of 50 to or so animals over the quarter, at least the quarter report I get, I think it is.
That sounds right. Again, I'd be happy to put together the statistics on an annual basis for you and send them out separately. I really didn't focus on those numbers. I know countywide, we handle like...
Brad forwards those to me, he could, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm looking it up, because I use that in my State of the City. You had 246 calls in 2015 and 235 in the prior year for 2014.
So those would be the field activities, and then the number of animals will be less than that.
I think the question about nonprofits helping you relates to the animal rescue team. Are you involved with them very closely?
To the degree that we do release those animals that are within her permit to her, if they're appropriate, we do.
Do you find that she arrives at these incidences earlier than your people?
On occasion, she may. I believe she probably has access to a sheriff's scanner, so sometimes she may even, you know, be aware of the activity before we are.
That's all the questions I had. Any other questions? Thank you, Jan.
We appreciate the partnership with the city. We really enjoy coming to Solvang and serving you, so we're looking forward to the next two years.
I think you do an outstanding job, actually.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Is there any other comments from the audience regarding this? We'll go to public for the comments. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Can we have a motion accepting, I suppose, all of the consent?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, that's a pass with a 5-0.
Item 6, Measure A Program of Projects.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and councilmembers. Matt Vanderlanden, your Public Works Director and City Engineer. So Measure A, as you're aware, is a retail transaction and use tax of 1/2% approved by the Santa Barbara County voters back in November 4 of 2008 for the construction, maintenance, repair, and rehabilitation of existing roads and bikeways, and for the provision or expansion of public transit services. Thirty-five and a half percent of the funds generated are allocated to the Highway 101 HOV widening project. 64 and a half percent of the Measure A funds are allocated to local agencies for various projects, and 1% is for the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments for their administrative costs. The measure became effective on April 1, 2010, and dispersment of revenues began in July of 2010. Revenues are distributed according to the approved Measure A investment plan. In addition to its local agency allocation, there are $3 million in Measure A funds earmarked in the regional project section for circulation improvements through Solvang. And in the near future, we will be recommending tapping into some of that for some of the Mission Drive corridor improvements. So annually, SB CAG provides an estimate of the apportionment of Measure A revenues. The City of Solvang must prepare an annual program of projects, identifying the projects to be funded with these revenues. These include sidewalk repairs, pavement overlay, slurry seal, crack seal, and tree trimming of our street trees. Solvang is required to dedicate a minimum of 15% of the Measure A revenues to alternative transportation projects. So this is, the alternative transportation projects include sidewalk projects, access ramps, anything related to bicycles or cycling, and funds used towards transit. So the approved Measure A ordinance includes also a maintenance of effort requirement, and local agencies shall annually maintain an expenditure of local discretionary funds for streets and road purposes. So the idea here is, the Measure A funds are intended to be over and above the normal funds that the city would use, the general funds or other funds that the city would use for roadway maintenance and sidewalk and curb and gutter and transit-related projects. So this maintenance of effort requires that the city continue to spend that same level, actually, it's adjusted annually, based on the Consumer Price Index, I believe. But, so the, so this, these Measure A funds are supposed to be over and above what we've spent. These Measure A funds are supposed to be over and above what we've spent, and not to replace the general fund money, but to add to the general fund money. And as far as alternatives, the city council may wish to allocate funds in some other manner that is consistent with the Measure A local allocation rules. And as far as fiscal impact, the Measure A revenue in fiscal year 2016-17 is estimated to be three hundred and sixty-nine thousand and eighty-four dollars. Included in the staff report is the accompanying resolution and the five-year program of projects, which spells out how those funds would be spent next year and the subsequent four years after that. So it's like a five-year look ahead. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing and take public input on the Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal years 2017 through 2021, and adopt a resolution approving the Measure A five-year local program of projects. So that concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions you have.
Are there any questions to the staff report? Seeing none, thank you, Matt. Oh, there is a question.
Yeah. Yeah. On the sidewalk infill and repair, now that has nothing to do with the schools, correctly? The safe route to schools? Is that in a different project, or is this out of this money?
Yeah, that's a very good question. The Measure A Safe Routes to School Bicycle and Pedestrian Program is funded by Measure A funds, but is a separate program. So as you might recall, we... About a year ago, we applied for funding, and I believe we received one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And those are being reserved. So after we do the Mission and Fifth Underground Utility District, and all that, all those poles are removed and everything goes underground, we wanted to wait till after the streets are all torn up for that. And then we're gonna come in right after that with the sidewalk project to add sidewalk along Fifth Street. But that was a separate program.
We don't see it on this list?
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's separate.
Right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes.
Yes. Under alternatives, in the first line, it says maintenance, repair, construction, improvement of bike and pedestrian facilities. I guess I have a concern that some of this money might end up being used on the so-called bridge that we're gonna be... The bicycle bridge that we're gonna be building on 246, which I now understand that Caltrans is gonna come in and raise that bridge, so that bicycle bridge is gonna be coming down. Have we put a stop to that? Or are we still going to throw money at something, and 2020's gonna come down?
Okay, so there's a few questions you had in there, so let me try to take them in order. So first of all, as of now, the city council has not given approval or any direction to staff to use any Measure A funds for the Alamo-Pintata Creek Bicycle Pedestrian Bridge. So as of right now, no dollars shown here in the program of projects or in the budget, proposed budgets or anything at this point are Measure A funds. Until you direct us to do so, we're not planning to do that. Then the other thing was, Caltrans is working on one last final step in their hydraulic analysis. Their Structure Hydraulics Group in Sacramento is doing one final analysis. And then we're supposed to be hearing back from them whether or not they will allow the bicycle pedestrian bridge to be constructed. They've identified that the highway bridge is now what they refer to as scour critical. And so normally, under those conditions, they don't allow any other improvements that might affect or impact the hydraulics that would worsen the scour of the piers of the bridge. However, they told us that if their analysis shows that the impact is really, really minimal, they would consider adding an additional condition on the project to install a monitoring system, a scour monitoring system, that would be... Have like a solar panel and a little telemetry system that would communicate with Caltrans somehow. I'm not exactly sure how that would work, but that would be an additional requirement. So what the staff's been planning to do is, once we hear back from Caltrans on this last little bit of hydraulic analysis, we're gonna come back with a full staff report, giving you an update on everything, letting you know what the options are, you know, what Caltrans is telling us, and what the, you know, full situation is. We've been kind of waiting to report back to you because we're waiting for Caltrans to finish this last thing. And so until they finish that last bit of their calculations, they can't even tell us yet whether they'll allow the bridge or not. You know? So we're... We want to be able to report back to you. If Caltrans says, "Yeah, you can build it, but here's all the other issues," or "No, you can't build it." So as soon as we hear back from the... We'll schedule a staff report and we'll give you a full update.
Okay, so obviously, they... Stay on. Obviously, they want to monitor this scour. So what happens if they find out that they're losing the bridge because of whatever we do? Does it become our responsibility, our liability? Is there a bunch of dynamite under ours that if it hits a certain critical level, it blows our bridge up and everything goes away and gets back to perfect again?
Well, from what they've told us, we haven't got detailed written communications from them. But from what they have told us is, once the bridges identify... Any Caltrans state highway bridge is identified as scour critical, it gets... Well, first thing they do is they have to develop like a mitigation plan so that they know exactly, you know, what they're gonna do if the scour continues to get worse. Like, for example, one of the things they do on some bridges is they reduce the allowable vehicle weight loading over the bridge. You know, so... But they have told us that the Structure Hydraulics staff in Sacramento has met with the engineering staff in... Here in District Five in San Luis Obispo to discuss this specific bridge, the highway bridge, not our bicycle pedestrian bridge. And they're recommending it be added to what they call the SHOT program. That's an acronym. It's a state highway, I don't know, bridge. You know, that's... Remember that acronym? Yeah. Anyway, it's some type of a program for doing replace... Bridge replacements and highway improvements. But the one thing we don't know is when that would actually get scheduled in and where it would fall in the District Five priorities. And so when, you know... But they have told us that for sure, eventually, they're gonna replace it. And the other thing they told us is now Caltrans has... Caltrans has adopted the complete streets concept, which... So every project that they do, they have to look at pedestrian, bicycle and transit aspects. And so they told us that previously, had they replaced the bridge and we wanted to widen it for a bicycle path, the city would've had to pay for that. But now, that's part of their policy, their adopted policies, this complete street concept. And so they would be having to include that to follow their own policies now, to widen the bridge to provide the bike lane. But the big unknown is the timing. So once we hear back from them on their final calculations, then we want to try to get... We may have to have some kind of meeting or something, or send a letter, or whatever. We'll try to get some kind of better feel of when it would all be scheduled. Definitely not within the next five years, but from what they've told us, they said that they thought it might get programmed in year 2020 and be scheduled for, you know, engineering and environmental work as early as 2023. But that's very preliminary, so anyway.
If we... Okay, if we go ahead with... And I know we're getting kind of off-subject here, but if we go ahead with our pedestrian bridge, your bicycle bridge, and something were to happen to the existing Caltrans bridge, could we be held liable for that?
I think not, because the idea is their Structure Hydraulics Group has evaluated it and analyzed it thoroughly. They do all this computer modeling and everything. And it's really their decision whether or not our bridge would have any kind of significant impact. So if they say it's totally minor or no impact, then they're the ones making that determination. And the encroachment permit that we'd have to obtain from Caltrans, from the District Five office, is based on that Sacramento approval. And so it's really would be their responsibility.
But that is what... Our plan is to bring back before the council these options. And we've... So Matt, we really are just barely getting the surface scratched, to be honest. This curve was thrown to us about three weeks ago on the bike trail bridge. We were moving along, thinking we were gonna do it, and then all of a sudden, I was like, whoop, hold on. So obviously, we don't... That's why Matt's kind of struggling, is we don't have enough information for you to present to you to make a decision. And so that's why we're gonna bring that back as a separate item.
Okay. Just one more question on that. Then we still have gaming money involved in this, correct?
You know, there's not a whole lot of that left. This has been taking a lot of studies on this particular project. But yeah, we actually had some matching measure... Measure A excess Measure A funds that SB CAG is about to program, but we're saying, "Hold on. Let's figure out what we're gonna do before we accept those." So yeah, but the Indian Gaming Funds, between their... You know, the whole thing we did with the intersection and roundabout, and now with this design, we've pretty much expended most all of those. We're getting close to the end of that.
Yeah, the Indian Gaming Funds were anticipated to be used up completely with the engineering phase of this project, of the bicycle pedestrian bridge.
So if they're gonna be responsible, because they have this mega thing now where they take care of pedestrians, bicycle and vehicles, why would we even want to contemplate building a bridge if they're going to do it?
That's an excellent question. And that's... And when we bring the staff report back, that will be what...
It could be ten years before they build it. So there is a gap between... You still don't have a connection from that Class One to the intersection. So that's the questions we're gonna be asking. And that's why I said we don't have enough information to give you.
Well, we look back ten years. It was 2006, and I think we were kind of wondering about it then. So what's ten years?
Are there any other questions to the staff?
So just to clarify, so the program of projects you see here before has nothing to do with the bicycle pedestrian bridge.
Thank you.
It's all around the sidewalk and things around town here, not the bridge.
Or the roundabout at Skid Mesa.
No, nothing to do with that either.
Thank you, Matt. Now it's time to open the public hearing. And so it's open, and I have one speaker slip. Fred Koval.
Fred Koval, Solvang. Yeah, I look at the smaller version of this map of money that's to be expended. Don't see a table number or anything associated with it. However, two things always come up when I see this. Number one is sidewalks. Say that again? Sidewalks. Alisell Road. Win. Win. Pine Street. Win. Alisell Road, needs it so bad. Only two blocks up, but then further on up. Around the corner, down the backside. You try and get around the top of Alisell Road to go back down to Viborg. And neither side of that road is healthy for anybody to walk. I mean, it's... If you go up the left side of the road, you better switch over to the right side and get on somebody's private property. Otherwise, the cars really get close to you. It's just begging for it. I take umbrage with the fact that you're gonna put sidewalks on Fifth Street. I walk that all of the time. I don't see the kids, the families, walking up Fifth Street. Somebody ought to take... Do some physical monitoring of all these streets that you think you need sidewalks around the school. Do you really need them? The other thing is, and it's been mentioned several times in the past, that the road maintenance in this city is lacking. It's poor. Public Works Directors in the past and currently say we're spending about one-third of what we should be spending. Where is the repairs involved here? Why aren't they being taken care of? Why isn't the residential network of roads being properly maintained? You need to step up to the place and face into it. Why don't you walk every road? Take out three months and just walk every road in this city like I have when I campaigned for city council. I walked every road. I knocked on every door. I left a flyer everywhere. Boy, do you get where the leather hits the pavement outlook of just what kind of shape our streets are in and lack of sidewalks.
Thank you, Fred. I have no other speaker slips. Does anyone else wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for action. Does anybody have any comments? I see none. Can we make... Have a motion, then?
So moved.
Remove staff recommendation number two. Is that the one you're talking about?
Right.
Is there a second to that?
One second.
It's been moved in second. We can have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. That's with the pass with a five oh. Onto item number seven. Staff... Oh, would you read that, please?
Item seven, Solvang Skid Mesa Landscape Lighting and Maintenance District, number 2004-1, resolution confirming and levying assessments.
Staff report.
So the city council adopted a tentative vesting map for the Skid Mesa project on May 27, 2003, and the applicant was required to establish a landscape and lighting maintenance district, sometimes referred to as the LLMD, prior to the recordation of the first-phase final map. The district was then established in November of 2004. The city has retained Francisco and Associates to prepare the annual engineers' report for the maintenance district. The engineers' report outlines the estimated operations and maintenance budget for the 169 single-family residential parcel subdivision at build-out and determines the method for spreading the annual maintenance costs to each single-family residential parcel. At the March 14, 2016, city council regular meeting, a resolution was adopted that initiated the preliminary engineers' report, approved the preliminary engineers' report, and set the date for this public hearing as April 11. At the conclusion of the public hearing today, if approved, any changes will be made, and the final assessor's role will be prepared and filed with the Santa Barbara County Auditor's Office to be included in the fiscal year 2016-17 tax roll. At the close of fiscal year 2015-16, the operating reserves for the LLMD are projected to be approximately $145,184. For this year's final engineers' report, it is estimated that $133,000 plus $12,700 incidental costs will be needed to maintain the lighting, landscaping and open space areas. As improvements in the remaining project phase are completed and accepted into the LLMD by the city, the assessment amount may increase to a potential maximum amount of $2,316.11 per parcel at full build-out. And you may recall, at the March 14 meeting, I went over and explained that it's highly unlikely that the assessment will ever reach that maximum allowable amount or potential maximum amount. Anyway, at build-out, each single-family residential parcel... Anyway, at buildout, each single-family resident, uh, residential parcel will benefit equally uh, from the improvements. Therefore, the assessment will be spread equally among the hundred and sixty-nine single-family residential parcels. Currently, the Phase One and Two landscaping and street lighting improvements, the developments' entryway improvements, and the detention basin improvements have been completed and turned over to the city for maintenance. Phase Three landscaping and lighting improvements are now completed and will be turned over to the city for maintenance beginning July first, two thousand and sixteen. Each of the hundred and sixty-nine single-family parcels located in, in Phases One through Four will benefit from the improvements. The total estimated assessment amount for the parcels in Phase, uh, One through Four, Phases One through Four is two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Therefore, it is proposed that the two thousand and, two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars in assessment revenue needed from the hundred and sixty-nine single-family residential parcels located in Phases, Phases One through Four be assessed equally to each parcel, or twelve hundred dollars per parcel. So this will be the fifth year, the assessment will be held at the twelve hundred dollars per year while building the, uh, reserve to the recommended level. With the recommended assessment, the LLMD reserves are projected to increase in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, seventeen by approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars and achieve the recommended level. The total amount to be assessed in the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen tax rolls is two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars, which represents the anticipated budget for the hundred and sixty-nine parcels in Phases One through Four. The Skid, the Skid Mesa Phase Two, Three, and Four final maps have all been recorded, and the developer will pay all annual assessments for parcels under their ownership until sold. After the sale, the developer will continue to be responsible for the landscape maintenance within a particular phase, in this case, Phase Four, until the landscape improvements are completed for the entire phase, and that phase is added to the landscape maintenance, uh, contract at the beginning of the following fiscal year. So in, in the fiscal year following the sale of a lot, the full assessment will be applied to the new property owner. The annual engine, engineers' report for the LLMD will adjust the assessments as necessary prior to improvements within any new phase being added to the assessment district. So as alternatives, it had, has been discussed in the past, the possibility of separating out the landscape maintenance, uh, as, uh, part of a homeowners' association. Um, there are, I guess, some legal, uh, questions associated with that. Uh, if that was done, the, um, detention basin would still have to remain in a, uh, maintenance district, and the city would have to collect revenues to, similar to this process, to continue to maintain that. And then there was also the option, or the alternative, of the city, uh, hiring additional staff. However, uh, that would actually significantly increase the cost, uh, to the residents, and the Skid Mesa residents. So, uh, there's no fiscal impact to the city. The LLMD will fund the annual operations and maintenance, and this assessment district will be funded through the levy of this special assessment collected on the Santa Barbara County Property Tax Rolls for the hundred and sixty-nine lots. And with that, staff does, uh, recommend that the City Council adopt the resolution confirming and levying the assessment for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, and authorize the city manager to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the city to place the assessments on the property tax rolls for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. So that concludes my staff report and available for questions.
Are there any questions of the staff report?
Do they have to mow their own lawns? Serious question.
They do. They do. The, it's just the parkways that are included in the, uh, in the assessment district. The parkways and, uh, some opens, uh, open space areas that are, would be considered like common areas, and then also, uh, at the ends of some of the blocks, the, the side yards at the ends of the blocks that are outside of the fence, the property fencing. So usually, there's like a slope there or something, and there's landscaping on that slope behind, just behind the sidewalk.
Um, Matt, looks like, um, the, uh, fifteen, sixteen, the one, one forty-five and change, um, that, uh, pretty much covers, uh, the, uh, the engineer's estimate for, for that year. So, the, the, um, the operating reserves of one forty-five, that pretty much covers the estimate, the, uh, engineer's estimate.
Uh, that's kind of just coincidental.
That is coincidental?
Yeah, yeah, the, 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 uh, the reserve is based on, um, six months operating expenses, because the city doesn't actually receive the tax revenue until January of, of each year, and so from July first through December, you know, we're, we're paying all the bills and everything. And, um, so our assessment engineer recommended having the reserve cover that six months. And then what we've done is, uh, as each phase, well, we've did a cost estimate, and that was recently updated, for the landscape improvements and all the irrigation improvements for all four phases, and I think that cost was, uh, I wanna say six hundred and eighty-one thousand. And, um, and it's recommended that the reserve also include, uh, twenty-five percent of that cost.
Okay, so about one fifty and change?
Yeah, so the total recommended is, uh, in the ballpark of two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, when, when do you expect to be able to achieve that?
Uh, with next year.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're right on target for this year, for Phases One through Three. We're right at the level we need to be.
Mm-hmm.
And so when we go through this process again next year, uh, we'll look at what the additional, uh, costs are to add Phase Four, which we already actually have, um, that in place with Valleycrest, uh, Landscape Maintenance. Our contract with them covered these next few years, and we got prices from them, fixed prices, uh, for adding Phase Three and Phase Four. Uh, then there's also additional water and, and, you know, things like that that we add in and project all those costs, but, um, and then, and then we'll, um, do that same six months worth of those costs, plus twenty-five percent of the six hundred and eighty-one replacement, total replacement costs, and that'll establish a new reserve amount. And then we'll compare that with, uh, the, of where the reserve is, and so that'll tell us the, the delta, or the difference between where the reserve is and what, what it needs to be. So that amount, uh, plus the annual operating costs, um, will determine the assessment.
Okay, so, so the, the, the assessment then, depending on, on, on that difference, that delta, that could move up or down?
Correct. Actually, next year, we, it, it's, uh, it's, it's, there's a good possibility that the assessment can remain at twelve hundred, or possibly, I don't, I hate to say it, but there's a slim outside chance it could go down a little bit.
Okay.
That's, you know, 'cause, 'cause we're not gonna have to increase the reserve by too much next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. Right now, we'll open a public hearing regarding this issue. I have no speaker slips. Does anybody wish to comment on it? Fred? No, okay. With that, we'll close the, the hearing and bring it back to the council for action. Does anybody have any comments, questions, or I'm ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes. It passes with a five zero. Thank you, Matt. Next is, uh, item eight.
Item eight is the twenty sixteen update of the ADA Transition Plan.
And Lisa, that's yours.
The Americans with Disabilities Act was enacted on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety, and requires that all public agencies operate all programs, services, and activities in such a way as to be accessible to and usable by persons with disabilities. Public agencies are required to remove barriers and/or construct improvements to transition towards full accessibility compliance. This update to, to the twenty-ten ADA Transition Plan documents the city's progress over the last five years and is intended to act as the framework for ongoing improvements by the city. This plan is a living document which serves to identify how solving intends to transition into compliance, documents the timeline and progress made on accessibility issues, and provides the methodology for ensuring that the work is cost-effective and included in the annual budget process. And staff, staff recommendation would be to receive and file the updated ADA, ADA Transition Plan, or direct staff to amend as indicated.
Are there any questions of the staff report? Seeing none, then we'll go to the public for public comment. There's anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this particular item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the, uh, dais for action. Any changes? Can I have a motion?
We accept the, uh, staff recommendation.
Well, seconded.
It moved in seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Pass five zero. Next is council member reports. Are there any council member reports?
I don't think so.
Very good. And next is the advanced calendar. We'll have one speaker slip on the advanced calendar. Fred?
Mayor and City Council Members, this has gotta be one of the items on this advanced calendar. It's gotta be one of the most important upcoming agenda items that you will ever face. It's the second item for April the twenty-fifth, CCWA Revenue Bond Refunding Resolution. Think about it. Do you want to bind current ratepayers and all future payers with this refunding? Do you want to have a nineteen ninety-one lack of research and contract determination like we had in that year? Remember, this is an upcoming election year for you folks. Think about it very carefully. There was no independent analysis done in ninety-one. Do you want to just believe Ray Stokes, a CCWA, on his face? Or do you want to do some independent research on your own? Which may cost the city quite a few dollars. Perhaps even a hundred thousand for that independent study. This is gonna be serious business. Don't be carried away by the masses. Sometimes the M is silent.
Thank you, Fred. Any other comments? Seeing none, then we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Hour and three minutes.
Amazing.